This reminds me or brings back memories of the covid time. When all of our meetings were on zoom, so.
This reminds me of the Brady Bunch.
And Chief Carmen and my Chief Carmen would be the one in the middle. So I guess he's Alice, right? And I'm drinking a Waterloo. It's it's not a beer or anything.
I don't know. When you turned it, it blinked out the label. So it might.
You'll never know. I used to hate sparkling water lately. I've seen do it like can't get enough of them for the last, I don't know, four months. It's better than soda pop though. So I'll give you that.
Much better than soda.
Excuse me for interrupting. Can everyone hear me?
I can hear you. Yes. I was just going to ask how you pronounce your last name.
Ash.
Ash. So just like it reads. Okay.
Yeah. Except you don't pronounce the C. I mean, the C is kind of silent. It's an unusual spelling.
Where does that? If you don't mind, where does that originate from?
I I think, don't quote me, but I think it's German.
Ash. That makes sense.
Yeah. And there's you don't run into it very often, but what's really strange is it's a there might be five people in a sixty mile radius, but we're not related. There's there's ashes out in Mount Angel. And then we were from the Staten area. We were transplants, though.
That is quite something. Yeah. It's the first time I've ever seen that last name. To me, it'd be very unique.
Yeah.
Counselor Zadi, your name would be unique to me as well. I think you're the first time I've ever met a Zadi.
Yeah, Italian.
Oh. Well, most people get my first name. They they can pronounce the first name, but they usually spell it wrong. There's so many. There's three or four different spellings, and I never correct anybody as long as they can pronounce it however they want to write it.
Well, I I go by Charles, my first name, and people still call me every other thing in the world. Charlie.
I hear you. I'm gonna duck out for a minute.
No worries at all. Good evening, Counselor Pacheco. How are you doing this evening?
There it is. Stop doing well. How are you?
Very good. I can hear our neighborhood training going through town. Please let me know if the background noise behind me is coming through. Hopefully, it's getting filtered out. Got a house full of infants and toddlers downstairs running around.
I want to thank everybody real quick for your flexibility and pivoting to this virtual auction. Um, we do have heat in the building now, but it was a little touch and go this afternoon. So thank you for your flexibility.
Well, Sean, I'm just glad you were able to mitigate the risk of a potential impacted city meeting this afternoon. You and the city staff worked quickly to come up with a mitigation plan and put it in action. So. And we've got lots of experience doing it this way. So we'll get going right at the top of the hour. So with a few minutes to kill, are we really going to end up getting snow later this week? Any predictions on that?
Well, the information that we're receiving from um, the Northwest Regional Weather Alert is that we're going to get freezing rain starting potentially tomorrow night, um, early morning and Thursday and Friday.
I still have nightmares about freezing rain four years ago.
No kidding. That was terrible.
That was completely awful. At night, I will never forget.
I did buy a big generator after that, so I'm ready.
My wife has asked me to ensure we have fuel for our generator just in case. And hopefully, the city generator is ready to go. Okay, about a minute and a half more. One minute. Hey, I've got seven o'clock. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. If I would ask, just go ahead and mute yourself when we go on and say the pledge of allegiance. So we don't hear like a bajillion different delays going on. It will make life a lot easier for you. But if you can locate a flag near you, uh, let's go ahead and stand for the salute and we'll get this meeting going. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all. Okay, a few house clearing items real quick on the agenda. Uh, we will be postponing the award presentation. We're going to move that out to March to ensure that we can actually get that done in person. Um, the other thing on the consent agenda, I want to ask and ensure, do we have any consent agenda topics that counselors would like pulled out for regular discussion? I'm going to go ahead and just call it by name. So I make sure everyone is heard. We'll start off with Counselor Yonley.
I do not have anything. No.
Okay, going around my list here, I'm going to go to Counselor Zadi.
I have nothing at this time now.
Uh, Counselor Pacheco.
Nope, nothing for me.
Counselor Steininger.
I have nothing to pull out.
Okay, we'll keep consent agenda as is. And with that, we do have a pretty packed agenda this evening. So without any further ado, let's get it started. Uh, first agenda topic will be the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit report. Uh, we do have Mr. Ash online. Yeah, I can say that name. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to you to go ahead and present. I'm not sure if you have anything prepared that you want to present in addition. If so, just let Administrator Nogle know so she can give you access rights to be able to bring it up.
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Charles. I don't have anything anything additional to to present. I understand you are very busy, so I'm going to keep this. This is going to be my shortest presentation I've probably ever done. I I promised Sean I'd I'd keep it under five minutes. And I first want to thank Sean for all the help that that she gave us. It's a it's a long process. It's it's not an easy thing to do an audit. People think you just take numbers and put them together and you're done. And we know that's not the case. So thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate your help. Uh, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly and just kind of hit some highlights. Um, we did oftentimes, we might have journal entries, which would be corrections of errors. There were a couple, but they were found by Sean. So they weren't things that we discovered. There were things that Sean noticed while she was getting reconciliations and helping us out. So that's great. Um, there's the independent auditors report, which I'll go through in a moment. Uh, there's a management discussion and analysis and M D and A, uh, which is a two year comparison for last year, this year that you'll see in the report. And I do want to make sure that my understanding is everyone has read the financial statements and you've had time to look at it. Is that correct?
It is correct on my side. Yes, it was also included in the packet.
Okay, good. Um, so after the M D and A, we have a statement of net position. Then we have the statement of activities. We have a balance sheet and a statement of revenues. Then we have the footnotes. Then we have budgetary statements. And then we have the Oregon Minimum Standards Report. And and that is the financial statements. I'm not going to go through all those. I just want to give you uh, what is there? Uh, we had no management letter points, which means that we didn't find anything that we've we thought needed to to be brought to your attention that that maybe things were going weren't going the way they should be, or or things weren't happening the way you explain it to us. And that's not the case in all. Everything was really well well done. I'm going to start with the auditor's opinion. There's only there's two most two important things in this whole financial statements. And they're both their reports. It's the first report is the independent auditors report. This report boils down to, did you do everything right? Did you do anything wrong? Did you follow professional guidelines while you were doing the audits? And has management taken full responsibility for them? If you can answer yes to all those, you pass. I can answer yes to all those. So you pass. Um, I'll briefly go through the highlights of the report. It is a report on the audit of the financial statements. We start off with an opinion by the auditors. We've audited the modified cash basis, and I will qualify this by saying modified cash basis is an acceptable method of recording your books and records. For those of you who are familiar with commercial business, you know that you would be following generally accepted accounting principles where you would have accrued accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll liabilities. You would have those types of items. Because you are a cash basis entity, we don't have any of those things as you if you look through and try to find fixed assets, for example, or debt or receivables or payables. You won't find them in a cash basis. This is a perfectly acceptable method of of keeping your books and records. Secretary of State's office accept these is valid. So we've audited the modified cash basis financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities in each major fund. We also have audited and reviewed the related notes to the financial statements. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects respective modified cash basis financial statements, governmental activities and the business type activities for each major fund and the aggregate remaining information. The basis of our opinion, we follow generally accepted auditing standards. That's the regulatory branch of the Association of Independent CPAs. We follow those guidelines, and that's how we design our audit. And we follow those procedures. Lots of lots of questions for for Sean uh, that she would have to answer, explain, uh, help us follow through in the in the financial statements and the numbers as they are. The numbers themselves are are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility as auditors is to to issue an opinion as we are right this minute and let you know if it's clean and it is a clean opinion. Uh, after the basis of opinion, there's an emphasis of matter basis of accounting. And again, this gets back to being a modified cash basis. And it simply says you you're not following gap, but that's okay, because it's acceptable to have um, modified cash basis. Management has responsibilities as well as the auditors. It's your responsibility to make sure that the numbers are right. We audit your numbers. And it's also your responsibility, and you you've looked at the reports, Sean has looked at reports, we've looked at the reports to make sure that they are fairly presented, and they are. Uh, the auditor's responsibility, we also have responsibility for making sure that we exercise professional judgment, that we identify and assess any risks of material misstatements. We obtain an understanding of internal control. Then we evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies used in the audit. And finally, we make a conclusion required by those uh, in authoritative position and make sure that the that uh, any matters that came to our attention, we bring to your attention. After that, uh, then we get into the M D and A, the management discussion and analysis. What I like about this is it gives you a two year comparison. So you can see last year compared to this year in several different places. Um, I find that very useful because the financial statements themselves are single year presentation. So you would not see comparative statements. So beginning on page forty, which is the beginning of the M D and A through page eight, you're going to see comparisons of the current year and the prior year. Uh, it doesn't show the difference, but you can easily calculate that out. So that does that for the um, net addition. It does it for the revenues expenditures, which again is probably more valuable than than anything else you've got, especially at this time here when you're working on budgets and whatnot. Uh, it gives a two year comparison by governmental activities and by business type activities. No debt, no capital assets to report. So that's why your statement of net position only basically it shows cash. It's got a little bit in in uh, due others amounts due to government, other governments. Um, and it has uh, some deposits on hand. Then we get into the statement of activities, which shows expend expenses by program and by business type activities. Uh, and it it shows additional fees for charges, operating grants, which there were were not a lot, and then capital grants and contributions. Get through a lot of redundancy when we get back into the balance sheet. It breaks down the governmental funds and it shows you what makes those up. In your case, you've got um, six different funds that that go in to be combined in governmental units. We get through with the statements. We get into the footnotes. There were no major footnotes that were new this year. And as of right now, we don't anticipate having any new uh, footnotes for disclosures. So these will be as is last year. They'll be this. They're the same issue. There's I I encourage you to read the footnotes. It gives some explanations and definitions of of a number of items, and it is valuable. Um, then we showed we show cash. Uh, you have a lease receivable, and we show how much income is coming in from those. Long term debt, the only thing you have is our capital leases right now. Um, and that is probably going to run out at the end of this coming year. Uh, you should have nothing left owed on on those capital leases. Or other long term. Then it gets into the pension plan, which gives you current information on the actuaries uh, study. Uh, we get into uh, interfund transfers out in and out. It shows you in detail. Then we get into supplemental information, which breaks down each fund by uh, it shows original budget, final budget and the actual budget. Those are all clean with with one exception. Um, and I hate that that I had to do it. It's so small, but um, you over expended in the courts in the general fund by forty-eight hundred dollars. Because of that, we were required to put a note in in the back report that that says that one of the exceptions that you had was over expenditures of appropriations as noted in the notes of the financial statements. So you will, you you'll see that you'll read that. It's it's a we just got caught short a little bit, probably at the end of the year when uh, Sean was probably closing up the books and doing some transfers. We just we just missed that one. Um, so that runs through all the budgetary statements. And then it gets into the very last report. As I mentioned, the the two reports are probably the most important thing in here. This one is required by Oregon state regulations. There are there are a half a dozen items that that the state requires you uh, to maintain. And as you can see under the compliance areas, there are deposits, indebtedness, budgets, insurance, et cetera. So we have to ask questions and and look at different documents to make sure that you you followed all the guidelines to satisfy uh, the Oregon minimum standards, and you did uh, with the exception of the over expenditure. And there was one other minor um, exception, and that was that um, bear with me here a minute. Uh, budgeted resources did not equal requirements in the reserve fund. It wasn't a large amount, but we were we were required to report that. That is odd. Was I less than five minutes?
I was on mute. A little over, but it's fine. You had a lot of content to cover there. So go ahead.
Go ahead. No, I'm just going to say when I when I'm done and out of here, if you guys think of questions that you wish you would have answered or asked, um, I'm confident that Sean could probably answer it, but you she can certainly pass those on to me and I can respond back.
Okay. Well, before we let you go, I know I do not have any questions personally. Uh, Sean's done a fantastic job keeping us or at least for sure, me in the loop on everything that was going on. Uh, I do want to express my gratitude that you were all able to complete this uh, before the end of the year deadline. That was a pretty uh, big concern of ours, and you guys were able to complete that. But I want to give our counselors a chance to see if they have any questions. So what I'm going to do is just go around the room, the virtual room here and just ask each counselor if they have any. The first on my list here would be Counselor Yonley. Any additional follow up questions?
Have none, no.
Okay, uh, moving on, we'll go to Patrick. Uh, sorry, uh, Counselor Zadi.
Uh, no, no question.
Okay, Counselor Pacheco.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Steininger.
No, I don't have any questions. But again, thank you for getting it done by the end of the year.
Yes. Uh, and by the way, counselors, I am not listing off any order, any particular reason or or micro inequity. It's just the way they're appearing on my screen to make it really easy. Um, with that, uh, city staff, Administrator Wade, do you have any follow up questions or concerns?
I I do have a follow up and Devin, I just again, Kevin Myers has just been amazing to work with. I just he and his team are just truly incredible, and I really appreciate um, them working with me and um, going through the audit. So please extend my appreciation to them.
Absolutely. We appreciate those comments. He's uh, he's one of my favorites. I get him. I put him on as much of my work as I can. Now, if we can just get him to finish up his military um, stuff, well, get more time out of him. He's away for two weeks right now in Japan. Uh, he's in the uh, in the reserves. So he's uh, hopefully do some good stuff for the U S.
Seems like it'd be kind of cold over there right now. But okay, if we have no other questions, then uh, Mr. Ash, we'll go ahead and thank you for your report out to us. And we'll keep driving through the rest of our agenda topics. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time. Everyone have a good evening.
Okay, with that, let's move on to our next agenda topic. This would be the Hubbard Fire Levy presentation. We do have Chief Carmen online. So Chief, I'm going to hand it over to you. If you have anything to present, please let Director Nogle know so she can make sure you have permission to present.
I believe that Director Nogle is going to run my PowerPoint, and I'm going to talk you guys through it.
I'm going to go on mute so you don't hear any background noise.
Okay.
Um, I apologize. I thought I've got a screen share, so I thought that you were doing that. So one moment and I'll have to pull it up.
Yeah, I can get started while you're doing that. That's not a problem. Uh, thank you, guys, for giving me this opportunity to come and speak to you. I appreciate that. I introduced myself and give a little bit of my history. Um, I have been with the Hubbard Fire District for almost nineteen years. Uh, in June, it'll be nineteen years. I spent the last year as the chief. Um, the year before that, I was the interim fire chief. And the four years prior to that, I was the assistant fire chief. So long history here with the fire district. Um, and we have been doing a lot of good things um, in uh, since we started. And I'm going to go ahead and go into that, even though the PowerPoint's not up. That's okay. Um, Hubbard Fire has been serving um, the city of Hubbard since nineteen oh one. Um, later in the forties, uh, a fire district was formed alongside the Hubbard Fire Department. And both organizations utilized the same equipment and the same volunteers, but kept track of their calls separately. Um, in the nineteen seventies, and I I'm trying to keep this short for you guys. Um, in the nineteen seventies, the fire protection was annexed to the fire district from the fire department. We can go down to number two. Vicky, thank you. And in the nineteen seventies, um, prior to that, we only did fire suppression response, wildfires, structure fires. In the seventies, we started responding to uh, car accidents. And then in the nineties, we started responding to EMS calls. Critical EMS calls only. Uh, we currently have an all hazards response, which means we respond to all um, all forms of aid that the citizens of Hubbard and the surrounding areas may call upon us for. Uh, our district is six point eight five square miles. Um, and we really are the first line of defense for the citizens of Hubbard and the surrounding areas. Um, in the fact that as we go on and get busier, our call volume increases. So does that of our neighboring fire agencies, Aurora, Woodburn, Monitor, they're all also seeing increased call volume. Um, and we're really seeing an increasing operational cost. It's it's really gone up over the years, and I'm going to get into some more specifics of this as we go on. We can go on to the next one, Vicky. Our current levy um, was passed in May of twenty twenty, and it ran from July first twenty twenty through uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, so a five year levy. And it was at a rate of ninety-nine cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Uh, that complements our base tax rate, which is eighty cents per thousand of assessed value. Our type base tax rate brings in about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, and the levy uh, brings in approximately three hundred and sixty thousand. What really hampers um, all public service is measure five was passed in nineteen ninety. It limited non school property tax to one percent or ten dollars total per one thousand dollars of assessed value. And measure fifty would come along and compound that in nineteen ninety-seven, which froze tax rates at the nineteen ninety-seven rate. It used assessed property values instead of real property values, and it also capped the amount that of taxation that could occur to a three percent cap. Of taxation that could occur to a three percent cap, so it didn't matter how much property values increased. Or the cost of services went up, the max that we can go up is three percent. So those two things really hindered public service, and it's really, we're starting to feel that now in Hubbard, we've been feeling it for years. But that's also one of the reasons why we have to come to the voters to get additional funding, and we can do that in the form of levies. Which can be used for personnel and. Equipment with short lifespans, or they can be capital bond projects, stations, apparatus, and equipment that is. Expected to last more than ten years. We can move on to the next one. Our current levy supports three paid firefighters and one paid chief. When we combine that with the volunteers, we can offer the Hubbard Fire District. Twenty-four seven coverage, we have that worked out. Well, we recruit and train new volunteers. A lot of times, our volunteers are hired into a career position. It also let us enter into an automatic aid agreement with both Woodburn and Aurora Fire Districts. And I got some call data that I'll go over in just a little bit, but that allows us to cover each other's calls and make sure that we. Are getting a fire response to every incident that needs that. And that allowed, because we all have paid firefighters, that allows us to share in that automatic aid agreement. It's also let us do maintenance on the fire apparatus and equipment. We have aging fire equipment. We keep it in good shape, but that's because of the preventative maintenance that we do on it. We've also been developing new programs to better serve our citizens and the continuation of existing programs. We can go on to the next one, Vicki. In twenty twenty, we started Advanced Life Support Service. We recruited paramedics to be volunteers, we bought the equipment and the medications to be able to offer that. While we don't offer it as much, because we are seeing a paramedic shortage, it is a service we still offer to community. We have. Started a fire inspection program that took off in twenty twenty-four, and we have upped the amount of fire prevention that we do. Towards the tail end of twenty twenty-four, in November and December, we started a smoke detector installation program. Really targeting anyone within our district that needs smoke detectors, we will go out and install them for free. There's no limit to those. So that's been very good, we've had a good response to that program. We have great volunteer member recruitment and training. I can't speak to this one enough. I'm a numbers guy, so. We've had nineteen members be hired since two thousand and seventeen and have gone on to work at other career fire agencies, including Portland, TVFNR. Mount Angel. Depot Bay, all all over the place, so it shows that our training program works and that we are producing solid, reliable. Volunteer and career members. Back in twenty twenty, we also started responding with the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office in conflagration responses, and that's been a way. To attract volunteers, but also help offset the cost to the taxpayers, because we get paid through the state when we send those resources out. Everything we do really focuses on the needs of the fire district. We can go to the next slide. To give you an idea, I I put some. Numbers up for the incident responses that we have each year, and really, in comparison. When I started in two thousand and six, we would run about a hundred and fifty calls per year total. So we've seen a huge uptick in the amount of incidents that we respond to, not only in Hubbard, but also. The mutual and automatic aid that we provide our neighboring fire agencies. And something to note is, in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three, we had zero incidents that didn't get a fire response. And an example is, in twenty twenty-four, we had five calls that the Hubbard Fire District wasn't able to respond on. We were either on another call at the time that it came in, or we were training. Specifically, one burn we did in December, had a couple of calls come in during it. But because of our automatic aid agreements with Woodburn and Aurora, they were able to come in, handle those calls with the ambulance, and make sure. That those patients and family got all of the support that they needed and the service that they needed. So that's huge. I am also a volunteer at another organization that's very similar size to Hubbard, has. A staffing model that supports four paid employees, they're deployed differently. But I would say that they probably miss, and this is reserved, they they're probably missing twenty-five percent of their calls are being dropped, where either no one's responding to them. Or a neighboring agency is having to come in and take those. So very proud of the numbers and where we've come from. We used to have a high rate where we didn't have anyone come. That was. In the two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen years, where we were pretty lucky if we got to eighty or ninety percent of. Calls not being missed, so. We go to the next one, Vicki. Some projections, Fire District is, we're on track to run just over one thousand calls this calendar year. That doesn't take into account any severe weather events, like what's potentially coming later this week, into the weekend, maybe. A very active wildfire season. Potential active shooter incidents, large incident volume in neighboring fire districts like Woodburn, Aurora, St. Paul. We do mutual aid out there, so we help with fires, but we will also go out and help with medical calls and lower acuity calls. Or if we face another major health crisis, we might see that number go way up. And it is really hard to predict total number counts, I can give you guys a rough estimate, but. That is what we're looking at for twenty twenty-five, so we're sticking right around that thousand a year mark. We go to the next one. I said earlier, we serve six point eight five square miles, running about a thousand calls a year is a lot for a district that size. Our district has an estimated five thousand five hundred people who live in it, and I've seen some fluctuating data, but. On the reserved end, about ten thousand people travel through the Hubbard each day. Maybe less on the weekends. Looking at the census and some of the population forecasting, I expect that will be well over seven thousand people in the district. With significantly more traveling through it daily. With the population going up and those people coming through. The chances of having our call volume continue to rise between twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty is a pretty sure bet. We go to the next one. Without staffing. And staffing means we have to have people that are available to go on calls. Career members and volunteers, it takes everyone here, we have about thirty-five people total. Everyone ends up working multiple twelve-hour shifts each month. Without the people, we can't do it. Without working apparatus, we can't do it. Without equipment, hand tools, power tools. We can't, we can't meet the needs of of the people that we serve. If we don't have the right personal protective equipment, we can't do the job. Same thing with training and a facility to store and protect all of this stuff that the citizens are investing in us. We go next. The new levy is going to go, it's gonna be proposed to go from July first twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth twenty thirty. And we're looking to increase that from a ninety-nine cents per thousand of assessed value to one dollar and ten cents per assessed value. And we're gonna talk about it, we can go to the next one. Each year, we have, the costs of doing business are going up. Retirement, health insurance, and the other benefits that we have to pay the employees goes up. Our fire apparatus testing and maintenance goes up. It's about five hundred dollars to test a fire pump. The National Fire Protection Association requires us to do that yearly. Used to be seventy-five dollars, now it's it's five hundred and it still continues to rise. Turnouts, we're about just under a thousand dollars a set, they're about five thousand. To fully outfit a volunteer or career member, we invest about twelve thousand dollars in personal protective equipment. There's also associated costs with training. We have to do audits, just like the city does. Our insurance is always on the rise, and then aging fire apparatus and fire stations require more maintenance. So. Kind of what I'm looking for tonight is we're asking for the council's support in taking this levy to the voters in the May twenty twenty special election. We serve all of you guys, and what it comes down to is we can't continue to give everyone that has come to rely on the level of service that we provide. Without going out for not only a levy, but having to increase that levy by eleven cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. Not only would you like your support, but down the road, I would like to ask the mayor for a letter of support that we can publish. In the Woodburn Independent and the Voters Pamphlet. And I'll take any questions you guys have.
First off, Chief, hopefully this levy will pass. You guys are definitely a valued commodity within the city of Hubbard, and I know you guys serve a lot more than just the city of Hubbard. Because you have an entire district. It's a risk at one on one-ten for assessed value, but you know, again, I think the city will, or the district, I'm gonna say, would definitely see the value in it. I guess a quick question for Administrator Wade, is there any concern with the city endorsing a district levy, as long as it's not part of the city government?
So elected officials can endorse a levy, but city staff can't support it.
Good. I'm gonna just go around real quick and comments, questions, before we move on, for some additional follow-up, I'm just gonna kind of ask, Counselor Yonley.
No real questions, I definitely am in favor of of continuing. Our fire district at the level of service we've we've come to expect. I know they've helped me out more than once, so. So I'm definitely in support of that.
Okay, Counselor Patrick, Zadi.
Just like to thank the chief for his time and the statements he made tonight. Definitely will have my support as much as we can, but all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Wonderful, Counselor Peshaw.
There we go. Yeah, just to echo what the other guys are saying, I, you know, I would agree that. You guys do an excellent job in the community, and we're happy to support you.
Thank you.
Counselor Steininger.
Um, I did have a question about home insurance. Having the staff station and the very fast response times out the door that you guys have, that helps our insurance, right? I mean, are you aware, you know on that?
I think some homeowners insurance that will affect, I'm not sure which companies those are, I know that it affects business insurance a lot more. And that has to do with our insurance office ratings. We also in twenty twenty, after we moved to the new staffing model, we did. We got ours lowered to a four all around. We were at a six in the city and a ten, which is the highest. Outside of the hydrated areas, and in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we got that down to a four in the city and a four outside of the city. Without some really significant changes, I don't think we're gonna be able to get that ISO rating any lower than four. And obviously, one is the best, and that represents, I think, one percent of the fire departments and districts across the United States.
I think that's a huge improvement, and I completely support the levy, so.
Excellent. Perfect, Mr. Wade, quick question for you then, do we need to have a vote to support, or is the verbal support good enough?
So Director Nogal, let me know if I'm wrong, but I believe there needs to be a motion and voted on, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and a motion to for the letter of endorsement as well.
So I hear two. Anyone want to take a shot at the motions?
I'll try it. That we. Offer a statement of support from the city council, supporting the firefighter, fire department levy, and also a motion that we can. Have the mayor write a letter in support for the local papers.
Okay, so let's break this down. I will begin by seconding the first motion to support the Fire District levy for twenty twenty-five. So now we have a motion and a second on that particular one. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, so that one will carry. We had a second motion for the mayor to write a letter of support for the levy. The motion was made from Counselor Steininger, I will go ahead and second that motion, so we now have a motion and a second on that second. That's a second, a second, I don't know how many times I have to say that, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay? Okay, then that shall carry unanimously as well. Chief Carmen, just give me about a week to get one written, and I will get it sent over to you. After we get a chance for Administrator Wade to check my spelling and ensure I didn't overpromise or commit something.
Sounds good, thank you guys. We do appreciate the support that we get from the city, and we value our partnership that we have built up with you guys.
It's been a fantastic time for the last seven-plus years that I've been mayor, watching the Fire District continue to work in a closer and closer collaboration with the city. And I think those type of collaborative efforts truly pay off in the long run, and that's only been a result because of the. Leadership at the Fire District that has continued to show interest and willingness into that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which is a great segue into our next agenda topic would be an agency report. Do you have anything additional, Chief Carmen, you would like to add?
No, because I was trying to keep it short as possible tonight for you guys. I know you guys have a packed agenda, and I don't want to keep you longer than I have to.
Wonderful, okay, Chief Carmen, I will reach out to you later this week, earlier next week, to make sure that we are in the proper time for the letter of support.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, if that is the case, before we lose Chief Carmen, is there any additional questions from the counselors and/or city staff? I'm not gonna go around and call names, just please raise your hand or indicate. If not, we shall move on then. We have two additional topics now coming up. One is first, the appointment of budget committee members. We have four positions available. We currently have two individuals that have put in for these positions. We have, can't be if I'm wrong, terms are current December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, okay, so the, okay, and then one is to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, so do we have two or three?
So. There are four positions. One of them is current to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Got it, alright.
And the other position is current to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and two positions are current to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
Understood, excellent, okay. Thank you for correcting me on that one, I was looking at it like I was getting confused on how, which, okay, perfect. So with that, we do have two applicants for the four vacated positions. One is James Audrich, prior counselor, and then Debbie Button as well. We each have their application packet in the, or their application in the packet, I don't see any of them online right now. I would suggest, before we go around for comments or questions, that we would go ahead and appoint. Mr. Audrich to the position that's current through twenty twenty-seven, and that we would appoint Debbie Button the same. Actually, since she's brand new, let's go ahead and appoint her just to the current one through the end of the year. Actually, since she's brand new, let's go ahead and appoint her just to the current one through the end of the year. To make sure that she likes the opportunity to serve on there and if so, then she can resubmit her application, we can get her back in again. Based off of that, is there any concern on these two applicants from anyone in the council here? And I'll go around first with Councilor Yonley.
I don't have any concerns right now.
Uh, Councilor Zadi?
No concerns.
Councilor Pichelle?
No concerns.
Councilor Steininger?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay, and then just based off of a visual indication, because you all are, I can just see you all. Is there any concerns with my recommendations to have James Audrich serve one of the current positions through 2027? And then assigned Ms. Burton to the term current through the end of 2025? Okay, looks like we're good there. And Vicky, sorry, Director Nogal, please let me know if I'm doing anything improper here because I want to make sure we get this done properly.
Just go, there should be a motion to appoint them.
I just wanted to make sure that I haven't messed anything up yet. So with that, let me go ahead and make a motion that we appoint James Audrich to the budget committee for the position. Current through December 31st, 2027?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, or actually, is there any nays? There is no nays. I just want to make sure that someone isn't on mute on accident. I would go ahead and make a motion that we appoint to the budget committee Debbie Button for the position of current term through 2025, end of this year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries, both are appointed and if they're listening later, welcome and welcome back, James. Never going to get rid of us. Okay, moving on to the next one, appointment for a planning commission member, one position is available. Term is current through the end of 2027. We had one applicant put a position in, that would be Ms. Button again. It is not uncommon sometimes for individuals to serve on both the planning commission and a budget committee, so that is not a concern to me at all. But with that, again, I want to open it up for discussion. We'll go around if there's any concerns, questions, and we'll start with Councilor Yonley.
Looking at the application, looks like she served on the. Says on the committee once before, on the planning commission, I guess that was. I thought she'd get back involved. Of course, I did take a hiatus myself to get away and then get back involved again, so I don't see any problems with that.
Perfect. Moving on, Councilor Zadi?
I have no objection.
Okay, Councilor Pichelle?
Um, I do have a question perhaps for Director Nogal. And it's just from my own ignorance, I suppose. The planning commission is full other than this one position, is that correct?
That is correct and I'm not sure, I would have to verify that the individual can serve both on the planning commission and the budget committee at the same time. For some reason, I was thinking that they weren't able to do that, so I would want to clarify that.
Do we need to delay this and move this out till next meeting, since we do at least have a semi-full planning commission?
Yes, I would recommend that.
Is there any concern amongst the rest of the councillors? You can do by visual, visual indication that if we postpone this till March? Just nod yes if it's okay? Excellent, then let's go ahead and postpone this appointment until we can get clarification from Director Nogal. Thank you. Moving on, we have another one here, not another one. Next agenda topic is calendar of ordinances. This is A, an ordinance number 3932025, an ordinance amending the municipal code sections 2.10.0101, regular meetings. Correct me if I'm wrong, Administrator Wade, this is adjusting our meeting start time to 6:30?
Correct.
Okay, for those, Councilor Zadi, Councilor Pichelle, in case we haven't done this before, this is pretty simple. We'll look for a motion for them to read by title first. We'll need a second, we'll do that two times and then we will do a motion to adopt the ordinance. It's painstaking, but I get to do a lot of reading. So with that, for the first one, could we get a motion to read by title?
I make a motion that we, that may read by title, ordinance number 3932025?
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, ordinance number 3932025, an ordinance amending the municipal code section 2.10.0101, regular meetings? Do we need to vote on each one of those, Director Nogal? Yes, I remember last time we got in trouble, we needed to vote.
Yes, you need to vote on, on them. Sorry.
Seems strange.
Read it again.
Well, we've already read it through, we already had a motion a second, I read it all.
That's good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's do it again. This just seems very strange.
I make a motion the mayor read by title only, ordinance number 393-2025?
I'll second.
Okay, ordinance number 3932025, an ordinance amending the municipal code section 2.10.0101, regular meetings? Can we get all those in favor of this, say aye? Aye? Anyone opposed, say nay? Okay, let's go ahead. I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 3932025, ordinance amending the municipal code section 2.10.0101, regular meetings?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Is there a nay? Okay, just, uh, Councilor Steiniger is one nay, so we have three ayes, one four ayes, one nay, but motion carries. All right, let's move on to the next topic. That would be goal setting for fiscal year 2025, 2026 discussion. I'm going to hand this over to Administrator Wade.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna try and share my screen. It's moving super slow. There we go. Okay, so this time of year, and this is just a little bit of a recap for our new council members. But this time of the year, we usually work together with the city council to identify goals and priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. Which helps inform budget development and how I put the city's proposed budget together to present in the budget committee. So during fiscal year 25 goal setting session, the city council committed to identifying projects. That foster a vibrant, safe and livable community. The key focus areas included infrastructure and public safety, economic development. And community amenities and engagement. The priorities were external partnerships with ODOT and the state for improvements on Highway 99E. Revitalization of downtown, promotion of local businesses. Sidewalks and community events such as movies in the park and Splash Fountain. Last year, the city held two movie nights and this year we are planning to hold three, so. That community event is moving forward. The Splash Fountain upgrades were completed and the pickleball and tennis court refurbishment will be completed this spring. The city received ARPA funds from the county and from the state for the water system upgrades. That will increase the static water pressure and replace the aging infrastructure. Another 1.1 million was received from the legislature for water and wastewater projects. And staff is requesting another 2.6 million from the legislature for wastewater projects. Identified in phase one and two of the wastewater facilities treatment plant plan. The city received a grant of approximately 350,000 for new playground equipment at Reverend's Park. And we are planning for another city cleanup day. Staff and ODOT are discussing, discussing safety solutions for both vehicles and pedestrians along Highway 99. For council consideration, all of these projects have critical deadlines attached to them. The water system improvement project has to be completed by December 2026. Per the requirements outlined in the ARPA fund agreement with the county and the state through the federal government. The funds for the playground equipment and the 1.1 million dollars in legislative appropriation for the water and wastewater improvements. Has to be spent within the appropriation period, meaning the end of the biennium. Staff will be working with the county and the state to get the urban renewal agency set up for the city's urban renewal district. And the agency has to be established prior to budget development process beginning for fiscal year 27. So in conclusion, Hubbard is on track for significant improvements in infrastructure, economic development and community engagement. Which aligns to all the goals and priorities that council set for fiscal year 25. However, we need to maintain focus on the existing projects into fiscal year 26. To allow the city to meet the funding deadlines and also to make sure that we deliver high impact results. And that we don't overcommit staff capacity to, to other projects. The city council direction will ensure sustainable growth and enhanced quality of life for residents in the coming years. Through improvements in our wastewater system and also our water system. So what staff is asking here is for council to consider one of two options. One, continue with the goals and priorities from fiscal year 25 into fiscal year 26. So what that means is that we will be focusing on the sidewalk reimbursement program. So that will continue into fiscal year 26. We did receive $60,000 in funding from Marion County that we're going to use for that program. Additionally, staff will be working with the state and the county on setting up the urban renewal agency. We will be moving forward with completing the static water pressure upgrades. And then also some of the wastewater projects. That the 1.1 million is dedicated for. We will also continue with community embeds, community engagement, economic development as we move forward into fiscal year 26. And then also we have the playground equipment replacement, so that's a large project that's going to take a lot of staff time and planning. And we have to get that done by the end of the biennium as well. And then one of the top priorities that I have for fiscal year 26. That I know council will want to continue is the safety along Highway 99E. And so that is definitely going to be one of my top priorities to work on, not just in fiscal year 26, but even now. So one is to continue with those goals, two is to schedule a goal setting session to identify new or additional goals for fiscal year 26. And so with that, I'll turn it over to council for discussion.
Thank you, Administrator Wade. With that, I just want to do comment, we do have you and staff loaded up with quite a few projects. And we are executing against those and it's, it's visible every time you walk around the city. Including if anyone hasn't noticed, the nicely cleaned curbs along 99. It's a little simple thing, but little things like that start to add an appreciation for the community when they drive in, that it doesn't look overgrown and just run down. Little things like that. But we do have big projects with the wastewater treatment, static water pressure. Tennis court refurbishments as well as the playground equipment replacement stuff going on. I don't have any concerns on moving forward with just maintaining the same goals that we have today, but with that being said. Let's go around for additional comment and discussion and we'll start with Councilor Yonley.
Now, it looks like we're moving forward on a lot of the, a lot of the goals we set in the past and these are, you know, sometimes multi-year projects and we need to. Keep concentrated on, on what progress we are making and continue to these accomplishments. Next year, you know, maybe we can project out another year or two, but I think this year that we're pretty busy.
Okay, Councilor, anything else on that one, Councilor Yonley?
Uh, no, that's enough.
Okay, we'll move on to Councilor Zadi.
I just wanted to add a thank you to the staff and it is really, really nice to see the city grow and change in such a positive way. It, it's just a nice thing to see. Thank you so much. No other comment.
Okay, Councilor Pichelle?
I have nothing really to add, but it looks like as Councilor Yonley said, we've got a lot on our plate and, and everything's going great, so. This is probably something we'll revisit a year from now.
Perfect, and Councilor Steininger?
I agree with everything's been said. It looks great and keep up the good work.
Okay, so before I make a motion that we go ahead and just move forward on the approving the, the carryover, because I'm assuming you're probably looking for that. As written, I think it's great. Could I ask though, because I know it's crazy, outside of moving these goals forward. That if Superintendent Oliger or Administrator Wade, if you find the opportunity to, a magic grant floating around out there or. The opportunity to do so, if we can find a way to at least get on our radar, a resurfacing of the path that goes around Barnsy Park. That would be fantastic. I think it's a safety risk the way it is now. We have routes coming up that is causing the paths to be very dangerous for individuals to walk, skate, I don't think you can skate on it. Or if a child was to, to, to fall on their bike, it would scrape them up pretty good. I know it's not on our list right now, but again, if there's just an ability, an opportunistic way to get that somehow in a magic plan, great, but. Other than that, I will make a motion that we approve the fiscal year 26 priorities with the focus on maintaining and completing existing projects as outlined in the attached. City of Hubbard Strategic Goals and Priorities Document.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of this approval, please say aye. Aye? Anyone against, say nay? That one carries unanimously. Perfect. Ah, let me find my agenda. There it is. We're making great progress, everybody, for a very tight agenda. Or packed one. With that, appearance of interested citizens, I am looking at those dialed in right now and I do not see any additional citizens online. Director Nogal, please correct me if someone's waiting in the waiting room or if we can just move right on.
You're good.
Okay, then let's move right on. Next one will be mayor and or council presentations and I do just have a quick update I want to share with council here real quick. As you know, last month, we approved a date that we are going to be getting together for Administrator Wade's review. Now, we've got a pretty good process in place to do this and I just wanted to highlight it very quickly and give you guys all a little bit of a time scale here. The first one is I believe the week, the review will be the week of March 24th through the 28th. Administrator Wade, is that right or am I off a week?
So I believe that was the week because the following week is spring break.
Correct, perfect, okay. So with that in mind and working backwards, because as a project manager, I always work backwards on everything. I'm going to be looking to gather feedback. Now, what we've done in the past is I've reached out to both the city councillors. As well as department heads to supply, to supply feedback. In the past, there's a written form for department heads to fill in. This year, I am allowing those that are uncomfortable for whatever reason to just provide verbal. I, I just need feedback. We as a council need feedback so we can give Administrator Wade an honest and fair review. It's, you know, I mean, I believe we all think she's doing a great job, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we give her the opportunity to, to hear any feedback that needs to be done. So with that, I will be gathering feedback between March 3rd through the 14th. I will include in this feedback request, prior councillors, James Audrich, as well as Tyler Thomas. Primarily because they were here over the last year during the time that Administrator Wade's been here as well. What I will be doing to try to simplify the process, I will take this feedback in as well as feedback coming from the councillors here. And there is a form I'll send out, everyone will receive it, just submit it back. If you don't want to submit the form, just set up time and we will talk. I will consolidate and draft and prepare a, I will consolidate and get a draft review ready to go and released by 3:20. This is going to go out to the current sitting councillors. This is a chance for you all to read a consolidated review or, or, or write up. And if you have any questions, concerns, you can talk to me kind of in a one-on-one. The idea there is as we move forward. Into the actual sit-down executive session with Administrator Wade, I want to make sure that there is no surprises on your side. If something was captured wrongly or you you thought I wrote something up wrong. Uh ideally, that allows us to move into that executive session and a final review. We get together. We have again, a chance for the first time as a group, we can have a discussion. Uh I will bring a laptop. We can make edits and changes as needed. Once we are happy with the draft and ready to go, we will bring in Administrator Wade and we'll do the review. Uh that is the way we've done it in the past. Again, slight changes this time that if someone does not feel comfortable. Giving a written um response, they're more than willing to give me a call and I'm more than happy to take it on a verbal side. Um that's how we are gonna lay it out. Now, a few caveats to this. Please do not respond to all on anything going out. This is not a a group meeting. I can, go ahead, Director Nogal, you have something?
Um I would, I was gonna say, um I had scheduled the um meeting for, it was gonna be March nineteenth at six P M.
Perfect. I was looking for that.
Cause yeah, you had said the twentieth, but.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have to release it at least three days beforehand. So let's assume I'll have it out by three eighteen. Give everyone a few days to take a look at it, then on the council. Thank you, Director Nogal. Again, my reminders to everyone, this is not a meeting. This is just me gathering feedback. So I do not want anyone responding to all. Um this is not a meeting. I will keep uh. Track of all emails coming back in or meeting notes. So as needed, I can submit those into Director Nogal. Just in case that we need to, as we've all been through the ethics training. Uh that we have all notes and minutes and everything else. It's gonna be on me to have to do that. Uh the only other thing, just to let everyone know here, is I've already engaged with legal, in this case Emily. On getting the updated contract for renewal for Administrator Wade as well. Uh this is just letting everyone know uh that I've already started that process, so it's moving along smoothly. Again, once we get a draft ready to go, I will make sure I have a chance to share that with the councillors, just in case there's any concern. We will take a look at that one uh when we go into our executive session. Um on the nineteenth of March. So with that, is there any questions or concerns on this process? I know councillor Yonley and councillor Steininger, you guys have already been this through this before. But especially councillor Zadi, councillor Pichelle, is there any concerns or anything you are worried about or anything you think that could be improved on this?
I don't have any concerns. Um I'm not really sure how it works, but see. And then uh if I have an improvement, maybe I'll come up to something.
Councillor Zadi?
I have no concerns.
Okay councillor Steininger and or councillor Yonley?
I have no concerns.
And you said that was on the nineteenth of six P M? So we're shooting for.
Nineteenth, I think it's at, is it six or six thirty? Uh Director Nogal?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yep. So if it's not on your calendar, please make sure that is on your calendar. Excellent. And if that's the case, then I am done with my presentation. I don't have anything else to add right now. Uh except for one, I I did get to attend the Qantas uh. Uh dinner casino night last week to help out the community and that was awesome. It's always good to see everyone. Especially those that volunteering the community out and kind of having a good time. Um. And with that, I'm just gonna leave it there. Any other presentations or updates from anyone on council? We'll go around and talk with councillor Yonley first.
I'm not quite sure if this is the place to bring this up, but included in the pack, it was this letter to ODOT. Um about their safety corridor, our safety problems and and requesting a crosswalk. Has this already gone out or is this a draft?
There's not a, i- if you look at consent agenda number D, that's where we'll authorize it.
Okay, maybe I have an old G. Alright, um.
Do you have, uh do you have any concern with it? If not, I mean, if so.
Well, the only thing I was gonna add is the the sentence here where you were talking about the um. This is a second, such fatal accident to occur in the same stretch of highway. And you might want to put in a timeframe there, within the last twelve months, within the last eight months. You know, that's my only addition to that.
Okay, we can make that adjustment. Uh Administrator Wade, can I make that addition?
So that way they have a a reference, because you know, if they're twenty years apart, that's one thing. But if they're just a few months apart, then that emphasizes it.
And I'm gonna give credit where credit's due on that, by the way. It was councillor Pichelle that wrote the initial draft. Well done. Uh taking the initiative on getting that out to us. Uh I think it's been through a couple of revisions now. Uh and then as a city, hopefully we'll get be able to sign it and get it sent in.
Thank you.
Okay, uh anything else councillor Yonley?
That's it.
Okay councillor Zadi?
I have nothing right now.
Councillor Pichelle?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Uh councillor Steininger?
I don't have anything. Thanks.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to a city uh report outs. We're gonna start off with Administrator Wade.
So thank you mayor and council. Uh the burn rate month over month and financial summary reports are attached to my memo. The city is fifty-nine percent through the fiscal year with uh most expenditures aligning well with the budget. A federal grant freeze was announced in late January, which is affecting a um. A grant that staff was anticipating on from the Department of Justice for the body worn cameras. Additionally, all work associated with ODOT grants has been put on hold. It's anticipated that more information regarding federal grants will be released in March. But the anticipated revenue loss impact is forty-three thousand dollars if the freeze is not lifted. Uh property tax collection is near budgeted expectations and finance finance. Franchise fees are exceeding projections. Salaries and benefits are below the expected burn rate. And again, that's due to vacancy savings in the police department. Services are slightly above the burn rate at sixty-one point nine-two percent, which is primarily due to quarterly payments. Being made in January. Uh utilities continue to outpace the budget. We have this conversation um. Every month, but we are projected uh to be approximately ten thousand dollars over budget. By the end of the fiscal year in our utilities line item. Um under our financial procurement and grants section, I met with um our district's legislators. Uh to discuss the city's wastewater facilities plan. And requested two point six million for phase one and phase two of the wastewater facilities plan project. And so this will include the wet well improvements, major inflow and infiltration source repair. And replacement of the existing blowers and construction of a new building to house the blowers. Staff uh was informed that testimony will need to be provided by the mayor. So I've already talked to the mayor about this. Um in May, and it is anticipated that our projects will be included in the capital construction. Uh bill moving forward at the end of this biennium. Uh the Ford Family Foundation and Marion County have granted funds to the North Marion Business Alliance. And North Marion Tourism Collaborative to fund the development of a strategic economic development plan. Um we, the uh consultant that was selected to do this work is Johnson Economics. Which that is the firm that's currently uh doing our economic. Um opportunity analysis for our comprehensive plans. So. I'm actually very excited this consultant was selected. They have a lot of background. Information on Hubbard already, so that's just gonna feed into a more robust. Uh uh economic development plan for the city of Hubbard. Uh they will be reaching out to community members um to get input. On the economic plan and they will also be reaching out to city council members. I will be working with each of you to schedule time to meet with a consultant and that'll be over the next couple of months. So. Um we have some time there. Um and then also the North Marion School District art students will be presenting banner designs at the March council meeting. So excited to see what designs they come up with. Um and originally staff had proposed to fold a community meeting either on March fifth. Or March twelfth from six thirty to seven thirty P M in the council chambers. Um the mayor and I were just informed uh today that we need to attend. Uh the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments annual dinner on March fifth. And so we're tentatively scheduled to have the community meeting on March twelfth. Um I would like input from um. Council president Justice Seiner and also the mayor to find out if March twelfth will work for you. Um you don't have to answer now, but um if you can take a look at your calendars and get back to me, that'd be great.
Well, I can answer real quick for you, Mister Wade. It's fine for me.
Okay, okay. And then uh there is a housing rehabilitation loan program available. For low income homeowners within Hubbard that need assistance with home repairs. Uh this program is through the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. They have set aside one hundred and seven thousand nine hundred. And forty-seven dollars for this program. And if community members need more information or want to find out how to apply, I encourage them to contact the city. And we will give them additional information. And that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, going around the room councillor Yonley?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay councillor Zadi?
Uh no questions. Thank you.
Councillor Pichelle?
Uh no questions, but uh thank you for your help with drafting that uh letter to ODOT. I appreciate it.
Councillor Steininger?
Yeah, I um am available the twelfth. That actually works best for me. And also the letter to ODOT is great. Thank you guys for all your work on it.
Excellent. So we'll start getting some notifications out that will have that community forum. Are we gonna have that, in your opinion, at the uh city hall or the fire district?
So I think we'll just go ahead and if we have heat, um have it here in our council chambers.
Okay, let's hope we have heat. Alright, perfect. If there's no other questions and it's getting, you know, it's already eight twelve, we'll move along to the police department. We'll hand it off to uh. Uh Chief Parisi.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Um just wanted to report here in January. We actually uh had the privilege of swearing in a uh new police officer. Uh by the name of Roger Montez. He uh came to us. Um. He's already been to the academy, which was a a huge benefit. And um is just really hit the ground running. We did a uh, he started on January first. And his first day in the office was on the second. And we uh, we had a uh a one-month orientation phase, if you will. Where he did a lot of in-house training, a lot of review of some high liability, critical policies. Um we also um were able to get him numerous hours uh at the range. Um along with handcuffing refresher training, taser refresher, uh baton training as well. He also did a Liberty House tour and um a a bunch of other online training as well um. With like Carley's Law and uh the Domestic Violence Protocol and things of that nature. So it was really beneficial, I think, to. Officer Montez and really gave him a good uh foundation. And so now as of February one, he's uh entered into his uh phase one of field training. And he is uh paired up with his field training officer, um officer Dan Marshall. And so they just finished today their. Their second full week of uh phase one of training. There's about four phases. Each phase is about four weeks long. And um the first two weeks have been, have been really great. So we're looking forward to that. Um we'll keep you updated on how that progresses and whatnot. Um I had uh the opportunity to attend the uh Winter Chiefs Executive Leadership Training Seminar. In Seaside um this last month. Um that was a a real good time and it was focused on several different. Uh key areas involving leadership development and uh frontline trauma. Uh crisis leadership and and things of that nature, recruiting and retention. Um and they had a really good uh case study on the, you might recall the uh UNLV active shooter incident. That occurred um a few years ago in Las Vegas, Nevada. So we had a, the uh. Keynote speaker on that was a retired captain from the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. So. There's a lot of uh uh good insights and takeaways um that we were able to hear through that presentation and stuff. So. I also just mentioned that uh we did hold a entry level applicant testing process. Um and um we're we're actually open for recruitment for both entry level. And um those who have already uh been to the academy and or certified that would like to lateral to the Hubbard Donald Police Department. And it was kind of interesting though, during that entry level process, uh we had four applicants. One person didn't even show up for the test. One called in sick, never rescheduled. So two actually showed up and and took the written test. Um and only one passed that. So uh but i- during the me- in in the meantime though, too, during that process. Um we've actually had a couple other uh one lateral uh in particular, in particular from a uh. A very large agency um with uh decades of experience. Who has uh expressed interest in wanting to join the Hubbard Donald Police Department as well. And has in fact picked up an application. And then um today actually marked the last day of Officer Bentley who um chose to leave uh employment here after. Uh you know, a couple decades and went to a a larger agency himself. Um for, you know, additional money and whatnot. We we uh. Asked him what we could do to keep him here and he said that he was gonna be making an extra twenty-five thousand dollars there. So that we would need to pay him another twenty-five thousand dollar or extra twenty-five thousand dollars for him to stay. And so. Nonetheless, um there's also uh another applicant that we actually have a background investigation right now. To uh fill that his vacancy and that person actually um comes to us from a of. Another large agency and has already been through the academy. So um that should be filled before too long and and whatnot. So. Um the only other thing is uh went through some CPR first aid training, my renewal for my certification as required by DPSST. And uh was successful in that and and passed. So happy to report that. But that's about all I have, I think, for my report for the month of January. I will say um. The tragic incident for of the uh of the fatal um car crash. Just want to thank everybody. Uh city staff and and council and everybody for your support and uh thoughts and and uh whatnot. As as we all worked through that with uh Hubbard Fire Department, um Oregon State Police. And uh the Woodburn Police Department, uh Woodburn Ambulance as well, Life Flight. Um it was, it was uh definitely a valiant effort by the medical personnel there who. Uh gave it all they 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 could to try and um save that uh the lady who passed. So. But just a huge thanks to everybody for your support and for everything that's continuing to go on here to make some positive changes in the future for. Um public safety. So thank you.
Well, thank you Chief Parisi. Uh going around real quick, uh councillor Yonley, any questions, follow-up?
Um yeah, I'm. I don't think I remember a time that Officer Bentley wasn't working for Hubbard. I really hate, really uh am sad to see him go, but understandable. You know, there's definitely uh. Uh opportunities out there for officers to move up and and uh we. You know, can't match the payment levels, that's for sure, the their their salaries. So. Um that I I wish would have had an opportunity to to say goodbye to him. But um hey, uh great hearing about the other officers we got coming in the pipeline. I'm happy, really happy to hear about that. So. And thank you very much for the the good job that uh, you know, you do and I and our our police department is doing. So. Uh that's all I have.
Councillor Zadi?
Yes, I I had one question. Chief, I was wondering how many applicants or how many new police officers are we looking for?
Yeah, good question councillor. Thank you for that. Uh right now, just one. And uh. Um like I mentioned, they are currently in the background process. And that would then um, you know, we would be fully staffed um once, you know, if they get hired.
Thank you chief. I also wanted to say thank you for uh your response to what happened on ninety-nine there. So. I thank you for those things you do for the sound and our and your police force.
Appreciate the support.
Okay councillor Pichelle?
Uh hi chief, a long time no see. Uh just wanted to uh thank. You and your department for uh your quick response to various things around town. Um I know a lot of people don't really get to see. All that you guys do, um but I do and I know other members of the council do and we greatly appreciate everyone in the department.
Thank you councillor. Appreciate that very much. I'll I'll pass it along too. We we do have a great team here and the officers love being here. They. Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that very much. I'll I'll pass it along to, we we do have a great team here, and the officers love being here. They love working uh for the city of Hubbard and serving uh the communities here. And so I will be sure to pass it along. Couldn't do it without them. So thank you.
Okay, Councilor Steininger?
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly thank Officer Bentley for his time on the Police Force. I know he's been here through a lot of changes and ups and downs and been a bit of stability for the department over the last uh over twenty years. I can't remember exactly how many, but I'm just really grateful for that. I was able to do a ride along with him when I first moved to Hubbard, and it's just been great to see him and work with him over the years. And um sad to see him go, but I do understand. Um, and I'm glad that we have somebody on deck, and your continuing recruitment has been really impressive. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, if we don't have any other questions, uh Chief Parisi, thank you for your continued excellent service. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, let's move on to the Administrative Department, and uh this will be Director Nogal.
Um, looking at my report, the Land Use Planning uh Commission Meeting on February eighteenth is gonna start at six o'clock for the public hearing on the Whale Project. And a reminder for the City Council and Planning Commission will be meeting for the joint work session immediately following that public hearing. And estimated time I have on that is about six thirty. The update for the ballot title uh vehicle fuel tax. The ballot filing for the fuel tax has been processed and assigned a major number, which is major number twenty-four dash five oh nine for the May twentieth, May twentieth uh election coming up. No new building permits have been submitted, inquiries of residential infill lots, uh food cart permits, commercial businesses with potential residential above uh the commercial use, lot line adjustments, and gallant construction or marble and granite on Industrial Avenue is uh wrapping up their large project. And also the Verizon Wireless Tower is wrapping up their project as well. The municipal court admin staff is constantly looking at ways to streamline and make processes more effective. Uh, we are uh continuing working with the judge to try to find court dates that will alleviate foot traffic during the first part of the month. And uh we had conversations with the judge to allow the us, the Violations Bureau, to set up diversion agreements for those individuals who qualify prior to court date, which will also reduce some time in the courtroom. I do have some uh graphs there on what's happening in the court. And I do not have any further information unless you have questions for me.
No questions from my side. Great thinking on what we can do to help mitigate the traffic going through the court. And as long as the judge is happy, I think that's great thinking, right outside the box. Uh, going around real quick, uh Councilor Yonley?
Uh, no questions.
Councilor Zadi?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilor Pichelle?
I have no questions either. Thanks.
Councilor Steininger?
I don't. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Director Nogal. And with that, we'll conclude the administrative report outs with our Public Works Department and uh Superintendent Olinger.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to share some additional updates um here at PD. Uh, first thing, I just want a quick apology actually to you, Mayor. Um, I was having some technical unmute issues when I was attempting to respond to your early earlier question and comment regarding the readiness of the city's generators, but the answer to that is yes. Um, all generators and our team are ready to respond as needed. Um I don't really have anything to add to the Spear Fuel Transport Grant, other than it is really exciting to um continue to make prod- progress in filling critical needs that we have for our preparedness capabilities. Um, so that's always exciting. Um I did want to note on both the citywide fire hydrant flushing program and also the uh water distribution valve checks uh check programs. Um, those are moving a lot. We did have some delays on those projects due to the below freezing temperatures, but they both actually are remaining ahead of schedule for completion. Um, as as staff is working really hard to get those um completed sooner than later. Um Also, um, just one quick note um to add on the wastewater treatment plant UV upgrade project. Again, this is another exciting thing for Public Works. Um is the completion of this project is is definitely a significant milestone achievement um towards our overall wastewater treatment plant upgrade needs. So we're really excited to have that uh very close to being completed and in 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 installed. So that's a good thing. Um I was also gonna note um some updates on our water system improvement project. Um, as I noted in my report, we were able to make direct contact with the majority of those directly affected by the construction um by going door to door. Um informational door hangers, along with my business card, were left on the few homes where no one had answered. Um, and although we had just one person attend the neighborhood meeting that we had scheduled at City Hall, I actually did consider this time well spent, as I believe that anytime we have the opportunity to chat, listen and share information um with the community we serve is a positive win for us. So again, I felt that was time well spent. Um, project information has been added to our Public Works um website and will be updated as new information becomes available. Um, I was approached by a local resident who is within the Third Street construction area, and she was very concerned about the possibility of losing internet service um during the construction project. She uh works from home and is very reliant on hardwired computer um that's connected with an ethernet cable. Um, and unfortunately, there is a slightly higher than normal risk for communications conflict um due in part to an area-wide challenge with their locate response being severely behind and or non-existent. Um, uh however, with City Administrator Wade's support and who also actually offered to let our resident use her office if needed. Um, but our city IT consultant was able to provide an option for her um in the event the lines are compromised. And if you happen to go over to City Hall, um, that's the reason for that temporary cable that's going from the administration office into the council chambers um where we have um one of the smaller folding tables set up. Um, we did go ahead and tape the um the cable down, and then I also had a rug placed over it um in order to reduce any risk of trip and fall incidents. Um, so that felt good to be able to address her concerns, and she was definitely really appreciative of that, too. Um, a quick note on training. Um, so as I noted, um we did have our annual fire extinguisher training, and that took place over at the Fire Hall and was hosted by Chief uh Carmen. Um, I did want to extend another huge shout out and thank you to him um for hosting this annual extinguisher training um for the city. Uh, this is just like one of many times throughout the years that they have partnered with us on mandatory trainings. And uh again, I very much appreciate their time and support for city staff on that, those things. Um, let's see, a few additional items. Um, just to note that as the two thousand twenty-five mowing season is quickly approaching, um just wanted to share that we did actually have a local resident who has expressed interest in applying for a temporary seasonal position for mowing. Um, staff does plan to complete a formal recruitment process. However, it's really good news for us that we have someone who is actually interested in that position, as it's been historically very difficult to fill. Um, and it's definitely a a more cost-effective approach um to filling that those, getting that work done. So versus the temp agencies. Um, as council is uh now aware, we have been experiencing City Hall HVACs as issues, um which is why this meeting uh was moved to online only. Um, staff is diligently working to resolve this issue um with our contractor. And I just want to extend appreciation to both administration and police staff for their patience in the use of space heaters during this time. Um, that is appreciated. Um, I know it's an inconvenience for sure. Um, I am courting costs for this um these repairs and um with City Administrator Wade, as this project was not actually specifically budgeted for. So we're um working, I'm working with her to make sure we stay within what we can spend, et cetera. So um, I did want to note also that staff has completed our um two thousand twenty-five in-house sewer cleanouts. Um, so that's good news. Um, the new equipment that we had um set up worked very well. We just had a few project learning curves, but everything was ironed out. And again, the in-house, in-house cleanouts are completed. Um, the second project phase for two thousand twenty-five is on Pacific Highway ninety-nine E, and this is the part that is being contracted out. Um, I anticipate a project schedule from the contractor within the next few weeks. Um and then another item, just to uh quickly bring to your attention as well, as it was recently brought to my attention, um that there's an area of um the City Hall floor that sinks, um basically sinks when it's walked on, um that's located in the Police Department. Um, staff believes this may involve structural support issues based on the location. Um, so I have contacted a structural engineer and scheduled a site visit inspection, and I'll receive a recommended plan of action based on the results of the inspection. Uh, this is actually scheduled to take place on Thursday of this week.
I just can't rope that one off, huh?
Um, that would be difficult.
I know. There's no room back there.
Yeah, yep. That is very true. Um, another thing I did want to, last thing I did want to share is we did experience another um water line break. This actually happened over at the Fire Hall. Uh, we have since had um, the repairs have been completed. Um, the one positive of this break is that staff was a actually able to use this opportunity to combine um the prayer repair work with the addition of a new meter install. Um, if staff recalls, I had mentioned that uh the Oregon Health Department has required that we um do a mandatory minimum of one um meter install at a currently un-metered site. So this actually um satisfies our two thousand twenty-five uh requirement for that. So that actually is a positive for having the break. So um that that is checked off as done. Um, so other than that, that's all I have unless um council has any questions.
I only have a few questions. Actually, the first one's a comment on your uh report out for number six, the automatic locks for the public restrooms. I thought was an ingenious idea. Uh, talk about, you know, I I'm assuming the cost savings in the long run for getting those installed and not having either an officer and or one of your Public Works people have to run around and get that done um i- is gonna pay for itself rather quickly. I thought that was a great, again, out-of-the-box thinking. Uh, and it never even crossed my mind to have automated locks. Hopefully, they don't lock anyone in. Uh, but I'm assuming there's some sort of a mechanism to allow that not to happen.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, excellent. Uh, also, I have noticed that there is some online chatter around uh soap dispensers. I'm assuming they're not in the bathrooms because of vandalism. Um, but
Yes, thank you for, that's a great question, and that is true. Um, so we have experienced a significant amount of the vandalism where the dispensers are literally pulled off of the wall. Um, the mirrors have been pulled off of the wall. Um, if the soap dispensers are up, um they're just letting the soap drip down to the floor, creating potential trip hazards. So we have, at this time, we have not replaced those. Um, I will share that we are not alone, because I uh we, staff has reached out to um another agency, uh neighborhood agency, the city of Canby, and they also have experienced through the years just a tremendous amount of vandalism where they have officially um officially stopped providing soap in the restrooms. And that is a direction I'm 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 considering heading and and getting um support for for doing that. And if we did that, most likely we would be uh creating signs and just post public notices, letting them know um the why of that we're doing that.
That would have been my follow-up, is if we can have some sort of a posting on the door, just informing individuals why certain things might not be in there.
Yes.
Uh, by the way, though, uh on those social media posts that I did see, the the picture of the bathroom was extremely clean. So again, I think a positive to that is, wow, our public restrooms in that photo that was taken were actually very clean. So a good job to the staff for keeping those those things up.
Thank you. I will let them know.
Thank you. The only other question I might have, and I looked at your dashboard again, and I know March is right around the corner, and I sound like a broken record. But do we have line of sight for those tennis court refurbishments to still complete in March?
So that is the hope, but it, as you know, that's a little bit weather dependent. So if we have a really late um good weather break, then it may be delayed a bit more. Um, but that is the hope, the contractor, everything is lined up other than just the weather, which unfortunately we don't control. So
True. It would be amazing to see that happen before uh the Easter celebration, the egg hunts down there, because it'd be a great way to show off the new tennis courts.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, I don't mean to monopolize all the time here. I'm gonna go around now for other counselors for questions. Uh, we'll start off with Councilor Yonley.
Oh, yeah, back on the 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 restrooms. Um the automatic uh door locks, so we were doing from dawn to dusk type thing. Are we gonna set times on those door locks, or is there a uh foot electric eye that's gonna pick up? Um, how how is that gonna work?
So they they will actually be on a timer that we can adjust as the days get longer or the the daylight is longer, we can adjust them accordingly.
So once a month, go over there and change the time.
Right. Oh, yeah. Yes.
Um, and then also, I know that um this this less to do with with Public Works and maybe a little bit more to do with our Police Department. But I know we have cameras outside, um and those are supposed to reduce the amount of vandalism that was going on. I don't know if we can um uh exactly what we could do about that, but you know, smile your on candid camera signs. I don't know if that's gonna help or not.
We could definitely consider posting notices that they are being watched, so to speak, and some sort of verbiage so that people are aware there are cameras. Um, the one downside is that um obvious, for obviously obvious reasons, we can't put cameras inside the restrooms. And so a lot of times, it's really hard to pinpoint when and when that vandalism took place. And then try to track that with who's coming and going from the restroom. So um
Yeah, yeah, I I understand that you can't, you know, photograph inside the the uh restrooms, but that that was part of the idea of of installing those cameras, and that was, again, more driven by our our Police Department at the time. Um, so yeah, I I just try to figure out some ways of reducing that vandalism. Like, I know when we were having those redone and and rebuilt, there was a discussion about uh making them nearly bulletproof with a lot of stainless. Um, and it was, I remember it being quite expensive compared to what we did have finally done, but uh but I I don't know, I wish I knew there was a, knew a better answer to it, but um, okay, well, that's all I have. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Zadi?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilor Pichelle?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilor Steininger?
I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Wonderful. And if that's the case, then, well, we'll just keep moving on through. We might be done within the two-hour mark. Uh, next one's a consent agenda. I'll go ahead and read the titles off. Uh, first on this would be approval of the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five Special City Council minutes. Uh, B, approval of the January twenty twenty-five check register report. C, accept the grant award for support of movies in the park from the Ford Family Foundation, the amount of three thousand dollars. D, accept and authorize Mayor Charles Rostasell to sign the Oregon Department of Transportation letter requesting the addition of a signalized crosswalk with a pedestrian island on highway ninety-nine E. E, appoint city administrator, administrator, uh city administrator Sean Waite as budget officer. Uh, F, approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget calendar. And G, approve to initiate uh a legislative amendment for the city of Hubbard Development Code consistency and compliance with the recent state housing bills as funded by the DLCD and performed by the MWVOCG, the Midwood Lamont Valley Cog.
What a mouthful.
Yeah, that was a tough one on that last one.
Uh, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read and additionally with the suggested edit on the letter to ODOT by Councilor Yonley.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second for the consent agendas. All approvals say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Consent agenda carries unanimously. And with that, the final topic for this evening would be adjournment?
I have motion, make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn uh and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone gonna oppose, say nay, and we'll put you on mute. Just kidding. Okay, with that, just reminding everyone, next time we will meet at six thirty PM. Uh, and I will see everyone hopefully uh next week at the uh Planning Commission Meeting. Otherwise, thank you all. Have a great rest of your evening, great rest of your week.
Night, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.